Yes, it will.
Yeah.
All right.
It has been.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay, so. I guess what I would suggest, I'm not sure. I mean, I think we can. Discuss a little bit about whether more is needed or any other steps are needed before we go to a public hearing. But as far as a substantive discussion about what should or shouldn't be in a bylaw, we should probably save that for. A public hearing on the. Bylaw would be my, I think that would be the best way to do it. Because it would have been noticed and. On the agenda for that purpose. So. I mean, is there anything else? Do we think that? The sort of report and recommendation recommended by law is enough to work with to. Put this on for a public hearing? Do we want to do anything in the meantime? Do we not want to put it on for a public hearing?
I think it could be enough. To go forward. I think it might be, it sounds like this may be a sticking point. Or a point question is exactly what this by law will be a official too. I would. Venture to guess that perhaps a bed and breakfast might also fall under hotel motel type rules and rights and whether that's something that we allow and then use own. In town already, or if it is something that we would need to think of a. Letter, including it within this particular by law or having a separate. Lodging by law that would be. Side of the short term because I don't want, I don't want a public hearing to begin and have it be super muddied over what? The bylaw is looking to.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately. Uh, and hold on, let me just. Um, what I didn't go and look. Is whether. A bed and breakfast fell under any of those. General law sections that are referred to in the proposed by law. Uh, I don't know the answer to that. I couldn't, um, I did remember seeing that, but where was that?
The second attachment here for the. The attachment A is the letter from Bacon and Wilson and it lists all of them.
There we go.
The one that talk about that has the definition is the second page there.
The chapter sixty four.
Yeah, if we get into that. As far as motel hotel, that's. If we lumped breakfast in with that, as far as where it's allowed in zones, it'll only. Be allowed in business zones.
Can I ask Dick to answer? Is there already a lodging excise tax? Or is that?
The original.
No?
In South. There, there, yeah, there. It would have had to been passed in the last.
We don't have any lodging, do we?
It would have had to been passed in the last. Three years, four years, is that how they? It's only been.
No, not because it, it shows here that. Local excise may already be in existence. Under. Like lodging, so it's like if you, there was already a motel hotels in town paying excise tax that. Um, this would then be tacked onto that excise tax, but it talks about in here that if you go through the process of trying to get this by law adopted. And you also want to do the tax, that's one of the questions. Does your town already have an excise tax in place or not?
Yeah, and that's what I'm, I.
So that was my, one of my.
I, I think that the ability to have a local excise tax applying to. These short term rentals. Is a new. Is a new law. I want to say it's only like three or four years old and I don't, that would have had to gone to town meeting and I don't remember anything like that ever.
What I'm saying is. Not to approve it for short term because yes, that would affect that problem within the past few years, but in existence prior to this. Law being passed for short term, there would have already be excise taxes being collected in various towns for lodging. Facilities.
Well, there'd be no tax on it because officially we don't have any short term rentals legally.
I get it, it's fine.
No, no, I'm just missing because I don't think towns. Could, could, could impose an excise tax until like three years ago. And you can do it up to like six point five percent. And I, I know this primarily from dealing with the Cape, right? I mean, we used to pay X amount of dollars every year and then we're paying X dollars plus tax.
And I was reading through all of this. I thought I read that there was a. That your town could already have it in establishment and then you're tacking the short term on to that law that was already previously approved by. Annual town meeting or council vote of whoever. Your community.
If they had one that was beyond, that was not short term, fair enough.
Twenty five years ago as an excise tax and then. It was just a further contention in some of this language, so I was curious if anybody had.
Yeah, no, we can take a look through the bylaws.
Figured out the answer to that question that's posed.
Yeah, we could take a look. I mean, I'm trying to, it will be anything.
At some point in time was the Southwick in an actual, in that going to that certain.
Great question. But Marcus. It was, but I don't, uh, no, I don't know. That's, that was before it was. Enabled, I would think, yeah.
All right. Yeah, Doug, it's that two thousand eighteen. So, four years. All right, um.
So getting past that, uh. Let's see. There was also. In definitions. Definition, short term rental. It. Called out the first. Period of not more than thirty one consecutive calendar days. That. A short term rental is something less than that. But then I'm wondering, how do we, if we do it here or we do it somewhere else? Is there a minimum number of days? That would we, we would want a short term rental? To be rented. Because a person might not want one of these right next to them. Living, you know, functioning next to them where it's changing every two days. There's no minimum rental. In other words, a minimum rental of five days or seven days. Because it could be just a revolving door type of.
Yeah, but I think.
Where they're coming in every two days or so.
You're looking to rent it for the weekend and we're gonna say, no, we, no. I don't know that that's a restriction I would feel fair imposing.
Well, it's just something I guess would come, could come up during the public hearing. Somebody may.
Yeah.
Has had some experience.
You're gonna, I mean, one is you're, you're sort of kicking out Airbnbs, uh, and, and, you know. For, for, if people want it for a night or two, whatever it is, you're knocking those out, um. But I think there's some probably unintended consequences, I think, like off season. Sometimes you get people who want something for a night or two or, you know, three, and it's not going to be a big deal, but you're now knocking them out from doing that, so. Um. So we, you just gotta think through that, too.
Yeah. There's some chats going on here. I see there's three.
Yeah, Doug was just putting up some information about the, um. About the excise tax and where. Was proposed by law and what it's based on, so.
There were some other things related to, uh, and I don't know if we, where we would deal with it, uh. Under. Uh, I guess it's page four ineligible units. The following are not eligible to be rented or offered to rent. The short term rentals, so it lists four different situations and I'm wondering. How do? Homeowner Association rules in subdivisions. Come into play here? Can in fact? A homeowners association pass? A rule.
Sure.
Uh, that in their, in the subdivision, they cannot. Uh, allow short term rentals.
Sure.
So I would suggest then we add an E here. To that effect.
Nope. Town doesn't deal with that. That's a private issue. That's not a town issue. It's a private issue. Homeowner Association would go after them for violation of the covenant of the. Um.
But it wouldn't conflict if this says it's, it's a lot, then it's allowed if it's not called out as ineligible.
But you don't want to start looking for every ineligible case. These are. These are ineligible units. I'm assuming these are, this is. State regulations that say you can't take. You know. These sorts of places and turn them into. A short term by law, or where exactly this language stemmed from, maybe Dick can. Give us some insight on that.
Maybe it's a question of just the semantics of it, right? And just finding the right language, but I'm not, you.
So you're saying the individual homeowner association rules. Would take precedent over this by law, which allows. Short term rentals in Southwick.
This, um.
Right.
I mean, I, I suppose you could put it in there. I don't, I guess it doesn't. It doesn't. I, I just gotta think it through. I don't, you don't want to create a situation where you're now. Putting the obligation for enforcement on the town over a private. Private, you know, covenant that applies to a subdivision.
Mike, you also don't want. The private covenants to override. Us either.
Well, no, they don't override. It becomes more restrictive, which you're perfectly allowed to do. You're allowed in any subdivision to make more restrictive covenants than. Are otherwise applicable to the town as a whole.
Presumably agrees to them before buying their home, therefore not offer their home up for a short term rental.
So how do we make people aware of that, though? There may be somebody. In a subdivision that. You know, wants to.
That's their, yeah, their obligation when they buy it, their realtor's obligation, their whoever's real, attorneys.
But somehow the.
I don't know.
Uh, registration authority, which is the zoning enforcement officer. Would have to be aware of that and not issue. Not end up issuing a. Uh. Registration. Right? The zoning enforcement officer is the one that's.
No, but it's not, it's not.
Register these.
But they can get a registration. They can, that's fine.
Uh huh.
It'd be, it's a private issue if.
But if they get a registration and then it conflicts with the homeowners. Rules.
Well, let me just give you.
They're gonna say, hey, the town gave me. The right to do this and now you're telling me I can't do this, so it ends up in a lawsuit, I guess.
No, but the town. So. I mean, let me give you an example from my neighborhood, right? There's a whole ton of stuff. That we can't do, that people in my neighborhood do every single day.
Clotheslines?
Clotheslines. We can't have trailers. There are all kinds of things and.
Recreation.
They are. They are technically allowed under the bylaws, uh, but they are not allowed on a covenants in the neighborhood. But. It's not, the town's not gonna enforce that in any way, shape or form. It's whether. If there was a homeowner association, they could come in and, and.
Does Jeff's trailer really bother us enough to file?
Um, and I'm sure there's places where that's done. It's not done in my neighborhood, but there are places where it is, so. That's how it gets dealt with. It's, it's an, it's a purely private internal issue. And that's, you don't want to get the town involved in that because that's a slippery slope that. You don't want to go down, so. It doesn't mean that you don't, you can, you can probably put something in there that basically says. You know. Um, dependent on the, well, you know, the, the.
Otherwise. Or the zoning enforcement officer is aware, so you know, that this, you know, where this location is, if they're gonna check it out. And see that.
Correct.
If there's a homeowner, they could ask. Are you in a subdivision where there's a homeowners association? And the person says yes, then there's a flag there, at least a yellow flag.
Are you the homeowner? Yes. Are there any other restrictions that you should not be using this home as a short term rental? Not that I'm aware of. Okay, then.
It could be in the application form that's used.
And we can figure that out, but I, we can figure that.
I already got one. Collier County, Florida. Two pages.
Um. Yeah, I was gonna say. I'm sure that's the, uh. The bylaws that we need to look at for this, but, um.
Anyway, that was just another little point to.
Okay. So, uh, what are we thinking? Putting this on for our public hearing?
Definitely.
Okay.
It's been out there for, all right, at least five years.
So, um, John. That's what, that's is.
Uh, technically, yeah.
Whatever time.
Well, let me put it this way. I do have a select board member. On right here that they want to be updated. For our requests.
Yeah, we gotta make a, we gotta make a, just do whatever needs to be. It doesn't have to go on for the seventh. I don't.
Then it'll be on the second meeting.
Yeah, and that's probably fine and that'll give us.
We have to send a letter to them and they have to send it back to us saying.
Yep, do it. So, um, that'll give us at least three meetings to get stuff done. I think, right? Yeah. At least three, if not four. I can't remember how many here in March, because I think three. Um, but. Um, so, all right. Works.
You'll be.
Okay. Depot Square Stormwater Bond Reduction Request.
That's the twenty first. Is that the?
Twenty.
I would like to double check whether the, like, connected maker. My presumption. Uh.
Is it true because that's a school vacation week or what we ended up deciding to be?
Uh, if it is school vacation, it probably got moved to.
I think it's the week before was Valentine's Day.
And you don't want to be there on Valentine's Day, is that what you're saying?
Somewhere.
I would like to shoot arrows at something here, but I'm hard.
Uh, I'm sorry, Depot Square?
Uh, yes.
Marcus is on the other side.
No, both.
I have to leave the room?
No, uh, okay, information has been received from, uh. The developer. Um, and we await. Certain clarifications, um. Ready for an engineer's statement certifying, uh, the market system is operating properly. Uh, and that happens to be the subject of. I'm going to tell there. The HOA and developer, um. Discussion. So, uh, I've looked at there as an item, um. Which is humans, we said earlier, I may choose to. Uh, send like a social assistant response letter in regards to the bond reduction request and saying, okay, well, when the. The matters have been resolved with DPW, if you give us satisfaction, bring this back to us. Okay, so. Have it there, landed on the one there, but with your permission, I'll, I'll do that.
Going back to meeting dates. March seventh and March twenty eighth.
March.
February.
You want February?
Yeah.
February seventh, February twenty first.
Thanks, Marcus.
Oh, they made the name, okay.
And then two in March. And two in April.
Okay. All right, so. We're all set with dorm, with, uh, the depot stormwater, um, potential bylaw and subdivision regulation modifications.
If I can just jump into this one.
You can.
Uh, if I were a smarter man, perhaps I would have put this specific exact item on after we, uh, went through the Nifty's, uh. Recommendations.
We can do so.
Uh, we, we can, but let's, let's do that, please.
Okay.
Uh, I think that'll be impactful to what we, uh, I want to put on our plate.
Okay.
For this, you know, time meeting and for subdivision regulation modifications.
Okay, um.
Do we want to move?
Uh, why don't we just jump into Nifty's right now?
That sounds great. We've got to wake up Randy.
Randy's alive.
And then you're gonna wake up us after this.
Yes. Randy, I, we were sharing some thoughts about that earlier. Uh, okay, so. Mr. Brown and I.
You put it on bigger paper next time, then?
It's coming that you've got.
Bigger print, larger print.
Well, the next time I'll, I'll leave it eight and a half, eleven, I'll. All right, so, uh, so, all right. I'm just bringing up the, uh.
Oh, it's gonna be on the big screen. Cool. So our online people can observe.
Okay, as part of the prior years, uh. Work. The compliance under our storm, under the county's, uh, stormwater permit. Um. For our municipal infrastructure. The consultant developed. A report with recommendations, uh, looking at. Um, where we comply with industry, I don't know, something called goals. Um, where we do a good job of, uh, achieving those goals and where we have active barriers. Um. To those both as they relate to. Green infrastructure practices. Um, in low impact development. So Randy and I went through this matrix and added a column to the left and I'm sorry, if I can actually find my share screen there. And added a column on the left hand side with DPW's recommendation. Uh, as you may recall, this is a rather broad document. Um, looking at a number of, uh, sources for regulation. Um, within our bylaw and subdivision regulation. Um. And we needed to boil it down, uh, into something a little more, uh, bite size, what we thought would be, uh, reasonable, um, for both in our perspective as well as for the town of Southwick. Uh, so perhaps the best way to run through this is the look at that, um, left hand column and just work our way through these, uh, sheets. Did anybody have any objection to that?
I don't, but what is the lack of something in that? Meaning?
Uh, I'm sorry, a lack.
Lack of a recommendation.
Oh, uh, no recommendation, which means we do, we are not recommending to take that up. So what we have here, that we note where we comply, um, with the optimal or good category, where we have an active barrier. Uh, in most cases, um, is where we. If we have, uh, language in that left hand column. We're, we're recommending some sort of action, uh. That's a little bit, uh, generalized. We do make a few recommendations elsewhere where perhaps we are, um, already doing a little, but, um, the net, it's. Falling over a low barrier to get to an optimal category. Randy, anything I missed in that introduction?
No, you're doing a great job, John.
Thanks, buddy.
I, I will just say I apologize in advance for the number of pages. I hate to send boards, especially this board. Twenty plus pages of documents to review. But, uh, John and I, we, we try to figure out how to best, uh, make this not only a, a clear and concise document, but also all encompassing.
Uh, uh, so, Randy, uh, I'm taking ownership of this twenty one page, uh, aspect. Randy wanted to boil it down to a letter and, uh, well, this is what we got. My, my gift to everyone, but I think we can run through it fairly quick if everybody's.
It helps us to connect your recommendations to why you're recommending them.
I thought it was a nice, uh, linear.
No, I like that. I like the way you know.
Okay. Um.
I'm sort of gonna give you a hard time, but I.
That's perfectly fine. No time to discuss the subject right? All right, uh, those first, uh. Three rows pertain to. Maximum pavement widths. Uh, right now, our subdivision regulations, uh, say thirty feet per collector streets, twenty six feet for. Choosing local streets, um. So they break it down into three different categories. We're talking about private streets, uh, such as the field we have at the ranch. Um. Collector or minor streets and this is where they, uh. Where our current, um. Bylaws and regulations say, okay, twenty six feet. Um, and then if you will, the, the. Secondary streets, that's the, uh, collector streets, uh, in our, in three fifteen, uh, thirty feet existing. Where we're making, recommending twenty four, twenty six, uh, for those collector streets and for the local streets, uh, twenty to twenty two feet. Same, uh, twenty, twenty two feet for the private streets. So that, uh. Is certainly narrow, but the, the goal is to lessen, uh, the necessary impervious surface. Um. And something to keep in mind as we work through this, uh, either keep those recommendations, uh, or for sure, anything that, you know, gets elevated to a hearing level. Um, you know, draws in input from other town departments as well.
So this is in our chapter three fifteen.
Yes.
Okay.
So what, um. So what's the difference between minor collector streets and secondary collector streets?
Let me look at the.
Is there a definition?
You say minor collector streets.
Here's the second one.
Minor, and I'm calling them collector because, uh, minor. Excuse me, um. Did I?
Then it says secondary streets residential on one. I just, I'm trying to.
I was trying to come homogenize the language in our bylaw in there.
Yeah.
But let me see.
I think it's just terminology that our consultant uses, like. It's just different from ours.
But we have a. But there's a distinction between.
Excuse me, the, the, the minor, uh, in brackets, I should have written local. Randy, where, where were you on that one?
Is it separated out because there's a difference between private and public roadways? Is that maybe why?
That first line is looking at the private.
Right.
And the second one should say minor and in brackets, that's local streets.
Right.
Uh, and then the last one would be the secondary or collector. So local and collector are the terms we have in our. Subdivision regulations now.
Mm hmm.
Uh.
And how are those?
Minor and secondary are the terms that the consultant used.
And how are those defined? Local and collector? For example.
Oh, uh, I believe it's based upon. Graphic loading number of units, uh. I'm probably not doing enough justice without having that, uh, on my fingertips.
So number two, the second one here is local. And that's similar to the private ones and then the collector ones are twenty four to twenty six.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
I like how we don't get past, uh, the first page you pounce on and it's like, good work. It was a good type of, all right. Um, how do you, do you want to look at all of these and then? Just if you want to run through them, um. You want to offer opinions, uh, as we work through? What are your thoughts?
No, I would say the most efficient way I think would be just because there's no reason to have Randy here if he doesn't need to be for other stuff, so. I would run through the, the rec, the DPW recommended ones. If at any point you want to comment on one, why you didn't recommend it, feel free to jump in, but, um, that, you know, you think it's. Worthwhile, but I would try to focus on the recommendations and then we can, we can. Ask questions about the non-recommended if we want to, but.
Okay. Let me, let me take the recommendations. Okay, page two, uh. This is if, uh, sent through. Now of your page. Above local area length. Um. What they're trying to do is build in, uh, accommodations for vegetation, uh, within the right of way, uh, our students, subdivision residents say, hey, lawman seed, uh. On the shoulders and banks and others, serve up construction, uh, and then elsewhere we go into tree plantings as well. Um, so. What, uh, recommendation is to encourage. Uh, the use of green infrastructure. Investment practices within the right of way when feasible. And part of that, I think, is just the opportunity to put that into subdivision, saying. You can do this.
The key, the key on this one is, is a word encourage. And I, I think we do encourage that under our new stormwater regulation. That was adopted town meeting a year and a half ago.
Well, you have some language in there.
We, we do require the consultant to review, um. Opportunities for green infrastructure within the stormwater permit.
I mean, is the, uh, is the, is the construct of a requirement and a potential waiver, not something that you would recommend? You know what I mean? Like, it, it, you know, it's, it would be a requirement and, you know, with the. Explicit idea that you could request a waiver if it wasn't feasible.
That's an option. I, I do wanna keep. I want, I do wanna keep that option open because not every site is suitable for green infrastructure.
Right.
Or there may be certain that, that certain, certain green infrastructure that is, that is more suitable than others. So. I, I do wanna, I, I think it's appropriate to have an out there, whether that's. Through that mechanism, Mike, I, I could be, I could be amenable to that.
Okay. I mean, I'm just thinking that encouragement. You know, it doesn't mean a hell of a lot and it would be forward dependent too as to whether they pick up on it or whether they say anything about it. Whereas if it's more explicit and there's a requirement, then you have to. Request a waiver and that has to be discussed specifically as to why it's not feasible. But you know, we can talk about that later on.
Sure. I think you, you, there's a few of those categories that are, you know, encourage.
Yep.
We'll, we'll go as we go through them.
But as a, as a general matter, that sort of. Encourage idea you have language that you've used in the stormwater regulations and we can kind of use that similar phraseology.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Randy, it's very good point. As you see here at the bottom of page two, where the recommendation is again to encourage in this case placement of underground utilities. Beneath or immediately adjacent to pavement. Ideas to again condense that development envelope. So. Use that term encourage.
But now we require. At three fifteen twenty eight, utilities requires. Utilities in new subdivisions to be buried. Rather than encourage.
That's right. So we require them to be buried right now. The encouragement is just relation to the location of those underground.
Not necessarily to incur, it's not required to be placed under pavement.
Areas required, but location is.
So location.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of the new developments, they've been putting the. Telephone, gas, electric. Under the grass strip and not under the road.
Does that, I, I was, cause I was. Thinking about this. It makes sense to not wanna disturb, right, and have it in less of development envelope. But when it comes to servicing those utilities, isn't it better for them to be underneath a grass tree line versus having to dig with the road? Randy?
I suppose.
It depends who's, yeah, if you certainly if it's your, your, your utility, you want it to be in, in the sidewalk or under the, under the grassip for sure.
Right. And I mean, and so, and you being the DPW guy. If I have to call out a utility and they come to the, to the local neighborhood and they're like, oh, sorry, now we gotta dig off this entire portion of the road. You're not gonna wanna get that call, Randy, right?
No, I, I, I wouldn't want them disturbing the road if not necessary.
Right. So, so this is, this is one of those places where, yeah, we encourage it, but do you wanna go through the process of. Hearing such a thing.
I suppose in a, in a similar fashion, right now we are placing telecommunications, for example, in the tree belt or. Some like that, then that operates the developer, the option say, oh, well, we can't confuse. A low impact development. You know, to the practice for stormwater management because that's what we require utilities. That is to free up some more of that space.
Okay.
For.
Thank you, thanks for understanding that.
Yeah, how about that? All right, page three. We talked about this a little bit earlier. Randy did some early coordination. With. Chief Russell. Russ Anderson, excuse me, regarding cul-de-sac. Radii and the fruit of, of that coordination said, okay, there's, there's room for. Lessening the, the area that's required for that. So we do make a recommendation looking at forty five foot radius. Next recommendation, excuse me.
Maximum, is it forty five foot required or a? Forty five foot maximum?
It'd be a maximum forty five. I, I would require, I would require probably it to be at forty five feet.
Require, so that's it. Okay.
So right now it's at a minimum hundred feet, I believe.
Minimum.
Hundred foot diameter minimum. Or maybe, yeah, that's.
So this would be. So this would be a ninety foot diameter.
Right.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, yes. Yeah.
All right. So it's a. You want it to be a specific, the engineer tells number, not, not a max.
I, I would think, yeah, too big and too small or, or both and not advisable. So.
Okay.
We set the number, set it.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Next recommendation. Is coming down to the idea of using invisible curbs and perforated curbs for drains into vegetative swells and grating garden. So rather than conventional stormwater drain, which captures everything into catch basin and conveys that. For. For stormwater management, the idea is to again embrace some of these roadside opportunities for stormwater management. Through these just letting water drain into that, into the green space adjacent to the road. And again, that's targeting the, the good classification. Page four. We don't have any existing regulations regarding road alignment. And so we are looking to. Buffering users are inferred horizontal roadway alignment that minimizes disturbances of a site's natural features and preserves natural photography. To me, this seems to be a. A small leap, because when we go in, in the design process, that's. Oftentimes it's sensible to motion. You're trying to work with a line rather than bucket. I can appreciate in some opportunities. Rather, some sites may present other opportunities. Where, for example, a developer may be looking to extract a mineral resource and that's a separate matter entirely. So I think to me, it's a, it's a small leap to get to the encouragement. Working with proper or, or in my mind, with proper horizontal line. To work with the natural.
Before you skip over, why do you guys hate permio pavement?
Hate's a strong word, but Randy has. Definitely a better answer for this than.
It comes down to the maintenance. There, there's specialty equipment that's required for permio pavement. Essentially, think of like, think of a big vacuum. So permio pavement has got these little pores. That allows water to seep through. If you look at it from the surface, it, it looks kind of like a Rice Krispie treat. It's kind of got large drag grit, but a lot of voids between the stone. So what happens over time is. Sand and other debris will kind of will clog up that those voids. And will make that per, that pavement not more, not pervious. So requires maintenance, which is essentially, you know, a, a vacuum type machine that will, that will clean that. And we don't have that equipment in house. And I just don't, I, I guess for that reason, it's more for maintenance purposes.
Okay.
All right.
So you're saying we don't change. The existing bylaw that requires the. The two minutes.
That's correct.
Well done, Randy. Thank you. Yeah, not, not a great fit for. The town. Page five is fairly easy. We've achieved. Optimal good rankings. For our. Your flexibility in parking. Where we offer to eighty and hundred point five percent for our opportunity to have reduced. Size parking spaces. And shared parking arrangements. The only. Note I put on this page that we don't have multimodal transit options in South. So. The first. Three rows look at. Parking requirements. Based on square footage is of a different operate, of a different sites, I should say. DPW doesn't have a specific. Recommendation for these items. I just wanted to mention it for plain of course consideration in case in the past. Now there have been. Discussions of any depth. Regarding our current parking requirements.
Okay.
Moving on. Parking lot stall and aisle dimensions. Right now we work with ten by twenty. Parking spaces. And. My experience in West Massachusetts and elsewhere, nine by eighteen is generally looked at as a, a standard size. I know the city of Springfield, their standard goes as narrow as eight and a half. In width. At eighteen feet and length. So our recommendation is to target the good category, category and go from a ten by twenty to a nine by eighteen.
Yeah, I think we've had this discussion. And because we have a lot of large vehicles. You know, Ford F three fifties and. Snowplow. Whatever, whatever. We've been down that road. I believe when we were doing this parking bylaw revision.
It is a delight.
And we came down on the larger parking. Spaces.
Somebody who sits and watches other people trying to pull into parking spaces that the plaza there by McDonald's. Some of these people driving big vans and big trucks. Can't pull into those tight spaces there in that. Place of.
Wouldn't it be more exciting to watch?
What do you drive? Expedition.
Yeah, extended. Yeah, basically, I've got the extra room in the back, X, the XL, so. I have to fold in my mirrors when I go through a car wash, so. Keep them there. Let's keep them.
Yeah, I think, you know. That's. The way. We've run by this before and come by this before and, you know, it surprises some of the consultants when they see it and say. What? Ten by twenty? But we do give the allowance. We have a percentage. We can be a little flexible and whatever, whatever. Yeah, compact. Those are driving the Teslas and the. You know, the old Priuses, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, but I just, I, I mean, I suppose. I like the ten by twenty and I. And I, for those reasons that you just said, I've never understood the seventy thirty split on that. Because it's not like you mark them. So. It ends up to be that you just have thirty percent that are smaller that anybody parks in and.
Uh, no, it's, trust me, when you've got a bigger car, you, you. And you look and you say, nope, I'm not fitting there.
Oh, I agree, but I mean, it just, it, it doesn't. Not necessarily, if they're full. Not necessarily if they are not.
Full and you're getting dinged. You better not have parked too close to the line in your BMW.
Or your Volvo.
Or your Mini Volvo or whatever.
What's, what's been the talk? I know I've seen some parking lots. Where in between the parking spaces, they'll have. I don't know what would be eighteen inch. Strip. You know, they have extra lines, extra lines painted.
Oh, I'm sorry. You said, I was thinking maybe you're talking about a vegetative strip.
No, no.
Or some.
Just paint marking.
Just pave the two lines down the driveway.
I can get you the one within ten miles.
Anyway, I don't think there's an appetite to change that.
Okay, moving on.
No, that's fine.
Okay. I'm just gonna keep moving for our recommendation to acting page. Nine. Last row. I'm sorry.
The driveway. Driveway whip.
April three driveway. I'm gonna move right along. At the bottom of the page, we. We look at where we have estate lots need to have fifty foot wide driveways. And. Part of the discussion, recently we offered some flexibility as is allowed under the. Bylaw over at the Greens West, we went from fifteen feet down to twelve feet, so. The. Recommendation is to consider allowing that narrow with. First day lock drivers. I think we did it as a waiver. In that particular scenario. Recommendation doesn't necessarily. Align with. The consultant's recommendations. They're looking to go to ten feet or less for. First, for standard driveway. Which is. I think I have a ten foot driveway in my house. You can, you can pity me for that. It's not a delight.
So this is. Just for residential driveways. So. Does one fifty seven two apply to just residential?
One fifty seven is the, is a driveway by law.
Okay, so it would just be, I mean, I just don't know how highways define, right? Is that, does that mean imply residential?
I would believe so.
Okay. Or at least I guess in the residential zone maybe. Okay. So right now the width must be at least ten feet.
That's for a typical residential driveway is a minimum, minimum ten foot.
And then estate lots must be at least fifteen. Did, did fire, did you guys talk to fire about this?
No, not this item.
At this level, no.
Okay.
The reason why I think it was acceptable to. Fire over at the Greens West was because that was such a short.
Yeah.
I understand it wasn't even a state lot. I'm thinking a common driveway.
Right. Right. I mean, the problem, right, is. I mean, maybe it just has to be to set up discretionary because. You can have a state lot driveways and, and regular driveways that are huge. And so you, you would need a. Truck, fire truck to be able to get down there.
Potentially room to move around, disabled vehicle or something too.
I mean, they usually have a. Anything of that size usually has some kind of turnoff or something in there built in, but. I just, that width is, that would be tight for. I don't know what the required is, but that would be.
Uh, nine and a half feet is, I think, the wheelbase, um, nothing to be attracted with on some of the.
So that would be some pretty impressive driving.
For me to pull my trailer with my.
We recognize your.
And if you could clear the snow off it. Clear the snow off it.
So I was trying to make one, only clarification, Randy should jump on me for this one because. We are talking about a state lot, which we don't have flexibility in our balance for fifteen foot width. I mistakenly was talking about the Greens West. That's not, I'm saying that was a common driver where we didn't like. So perhaps the consideration is to look at building and some flexibility to stay alive. By law.
Yeah, depending on, yeah, or right.
Allowing flexibility so long as fire safety would allow it to go down to that. Lower level.
And I mean, I don't, I, I'm not sure. I would object to a maximum. I just need to, it needs to be. Either flexible or reasonable to have a maximum. That's in there. I mean, I, I think.
Any residential driveway or just the estate lots?
On. Any residential driveway, if you're trying, I mean, part of the purpose of this is to try to. Create less. Paved surface, right? And so. I'm not a big fan of a maximum. And minimum I get.
I won't be able to park my Harley there somewhere next to my boat, next to my car, next to my husband's work truck, next to my other car. Don't mess with my maximum. If I can afford to pay that, I'm going to.
There's a reason why this has been pushed out for. A couple of meetings.
I mean, I, I don't think my brother-in-law likes to be called Jeb, but. All right, so. So, yeah, no, I mean, I, that's my opinion on it. So we can talk about that if you know, but. All right. What's next?
Okay, moving over to the next page, driveway length. So going back to the discussion about. Pervious materials. So going back to the uh discussion about pervious materials. Um you know, whereas DPW doesn't feel that's an appropriate solution for Southwick for our town maintained roads. Um the recommendation is to consider modifying the definition of what a compacted surface is. To allow the use of pervious materials by right at residential driveways. Subject to DPW.
So this optimum one, but subject to. DPW.
Yes.
Because they don't, you guys don't have to maintain them, so.
So I think that that notice there just to make sure that it's. You know, feels that, you know, durable.
Right, because I'm I'm thinking about the lower part of Granville Road there where everybody's driveways every season wash out into Granville Road. So those might not be appropriate sites, so the DPW director would want to approve loose driveway surfaces.
It would, in that case, probably a waste of the homeowner's money, right? Um but in other locations where, you know, soil conditions are uh appropriate. At least to give them that flexibility.
Well, it will allow them to have some kind of a pad of twenty-five foot, whatever.
Sure, it doesn't have to be an entire.
Hard hard surface and then beyond that, it could be gravel, that gravel mix that turns out to be pretty stable.
Yeah. Okay, uh next page. And page after that. Under sidewalks, table four. Right now, we have a minimum width of five feet required for some of the sidewalks. Uh ADA uh requires uh four feet um with passing spaces. At certain intervals. Um so the recommendation is uh to modify uh some of this medication is. To align with the ADA requirement for minimum width.
Who or where would we verify the. Within spacing for the ADA in this case, like if we were to allow them to do it four feet and. That's new or DPW would have to.
To be asked, yes, I suppose the the technical compliance would fall on uh our shoulders when it comes to review.
But it wouldn't be. Just changing the five to a four if you're trying to comply with the ADA, you'd have to use the. Full ADA language about passing spaces and all that kind of stuff, which I can't imagine. Any developer doing, but putting that aside. I, you know, it's a, that is that what you're, is that the recommendation that it's taking that full language and putting it in, not just changing the by door for?
Well.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's correct, but Randy, let me draw you back in this discussion here. Uh you know, there's the. Is uh, do you think the the best goal is to provide that opportunity to a developer? Um or to mandate? Put on spot there, it's firm language. To mandate uh that uh. Going to a narrower sidewalk width.
So I can still get my dogs bark in the background, I'm sorry.
Awful convenient. It's one of the parts here too, Randy. Uh Randy, so is, just to refresh my memory uh for the for the board's uh. Uh luxury here, do. Were we thinking about mandating uh going to that uh four foot with uh pass. Uh passing accommodations as dictated under ADA, uh or was that giving them the option? Lessening their requirements so so a developer could look at four foot sidewalks. But uh complying with ADA versus straight five everywhere.
Oh, I guess I didn't consider that um.
Make a fresh idea then.
Well, ADA doesn't preclude you from putting putting in five foot sidewalks.
Sure.
Okay, if you can't meet the four foot, you know, with twenty feet passing spaces, then you have to have five feet width.
Fair enough, that makes sense.
So it basically would be the ADA language, which gives you two options, either. Narrower with passing spaces or five foot.
Correct.
But.
No, fair enough.
Alright.
So that's that left hand optimal. All that verbiage.
Yes.
Yes. Why not?
Yeah, there's more, yeah. That's sort of a summary, but yeah.
Um alright, next page in the zoning and development. Um I make note of the fact that DP doesn't have a recommendation, uh but this is where the consultant. Uh was examining our uh setback requirements. Um and again, I'm gonna have to rely on uh the board members' experience to see if uh this topic has come up in recent history.
Does it end up?
Don't have a, I mean. In some of the. I don't know. I mean, there just hasn't been setbacks have not, don't come up all that often in this town because of the size of the lots and. Most cases, there's certainly areas where there's not huge lots, but setbacks have not really been a.
But they end up, do they end up going to the Board of Appeals?
You know, by the.
I've heard is like when people look to make like an addition or.
Correct.
A shed or something that's too close to the line in the R twenty and then. Yeah, where it goes from there, but.
Correct, so I mean, it's very limited issue. I'm not sure. You know, I mean, I I get where. You can play around with stuff, but I'm just not sure it matter, it has a practical impact in any way.
It might be interesting. Am I gonna say this? To bounce it off the Board of Appeals.
You, that's, I I think you just volunteered for that.
We can team up.
I think their chairman is uh a very. Able person and uh maybe they would have some. Comments or I don't know that they would, but.
Like I said, you just volunteered.
Uh alright, uh let's see, next page. We're still under zoning uh category under clearing and grading. Um recommendations for the planning board to. Um have a discussion for tree planting options, but we're talking about. Preservation of existing trees. On land which cannot be cleared or graded. That's cool. When Randy and I were discussing this, you know, we. Gave some thought to what, you know, ten percent remaining looks like, right? Um and how oftentimes we find that. Um if you're clearing a forested area, uh what remains on the fringe is. Subject to or frequently subject to damage, wind damage. Um you know, the root systems aren't um as robust as something that is standing alone. And roots with the sets of wind loads from all directions, from a new direction to clear inside really uh of those tree um.
Yeah, you look at noble.
The stabilizing vegetation and.
You look at Noble Steed where they had those uh. White pine standing in a group and then it was cleared around. There's a lot of blowdown. They blow over.
Uh and so. But like I said, that then we're all sharing uh some of the same concerns about.
I don't know how you address it though.
What, it might be the best fit for Southwick, I guess. The project's received.
Somehow, somehow uh. Grouping. I don't know what you call that. I should know. Where's the tree warden? Do we have a tree warden? Mister Brown.
Yes.
So.
Clustering, clustering.
That works.
Is a good term.
So the funny thing I guess about uh this discussion as we're now going through it uh is that. Although it's listed as a barrier to achieving some of the NFTs goals. The the people, the category, that right-hand category, so second last column on the right. Does offer an off-site tree planting option in loop of onsite tree plantings for that ten percent.
Why is that a barrier?
They're presenting as a barrier because they're looking at it from a.
Those are then what's there?
Uh sure, uh uh construction disturbance. Um perspective. That fair, Randy?
Yeah, it's it's a regulatory issue. It's a bear because it's it's not specified anywhere or. I think that's why they call it a barrier.
But it seemed, I mean, it's a pretty common. Structure. In environmental protection.
Offsite mitigation for sure.
Carbon offset, right? I mean, it's basically what it is.
They keep coming back with saying stuff like that is a bunch of supposedly that, you know. Is that if your intent is to try to keep the natural area as intact as possible by then saying. Well, it's okay, you can still clear this fifty acres completely and then just can a couple of shrubs in the forest that already exists on the other side of town. It's not really an equal fair trade.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know if we can do that. That's more of an exaction. Requiring them to do something somewhere else that might not be connected directly to the uh development.
Well, our recommendation is for discussion. I think we're achieving that recommendation.
If it's ten percent of what cannot be cleared or graded, then. If it's, if it can't be upgraded, isn't. Confused of that interrelation between. You know, if 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 an acre, it cannot be cleared or graded. You can take down all the trees except for the ten percent of that you can't clear or grade.
Well, I assume tree canopy is defined in a certain way too, right? So I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna. Specify certain kinds of trees. Um right, because it's a tree canopy.
So sure, we're talking about, if we will, the outer reach of brain. So that develop, define as the canopy. Uh Jessica, to your point, I think that probably would have awarded their recognition of it differently. I feel like they're trying to bolster the idea of. You know, uh from from that drip line of those trees, that's where you begin your measurement. As opposed to up to the trunk and you destroy the tree and away something like that.
What is saying, am I reading this uh required development of commercial sites? Am I looking at the right line?
Correct line, yeah.
So this is industrial and business zones.
I mean, again, I, we can, I I. I mean, I have a tendency toward the fifty percent. I or or some. Selection similar to that, uh depending on how it's created, but. I also just wonder how. Much it really applies in the town, because I'm not sure there's much. Tree covered. Commercial zones. In this town still, but um. Doesn't mean it's not worth talking about and having in there. It's just I'm not sure there's really yet much left until.
Well, we've only got, we've got it in subdivision regulation three fifteen twenty-two shade trees. Right?
But that wouldn't apply to this, right? Because that's, this is talking about commercial.
This thing specimen shade trees must be left in place where practicable.
So it will here says commercial, Mike, but it doesn't mean we can't, we can open it up to other.
Oh, agreed. Yeah, no, I think that's right, and that's what I was just trying to figure out in my head is. That, like I said, I'm not sure it really applies to much in the commercial setting anymore. In town. Okay, well.
So we wouldn't change the uh three fifteen twenty-two.
Well, I'm I may, I'm not sure where practical really.
Yeah, I know, that's a real, that's a weak, is a word. Words.
And again, I tend to, you know, um. I guess my tendency is if you have a requirement and you allow for waivers or you allow for exceptions and depending on the site specific. Areas, those tend to work better than sort of that. You know, language where. Um, okay.
Shall we?
Yes.
Okay. Uh next page, tree conservation. Um so. The recommendations of the consultant um are looking at, uh we talk about sites where there was no tree cover. Prior to development. And so it's a question of, okay, do we set uh minimum requirements for. Tree planters of those types of development.
I think we've only required like buffer, buffer areas, or we have the parking lot. Bylaw that requires uh vegetative strips in between. The parking areas.
That's correct.
I mean, it's certainly. Make things look better, right? You know, you know. There's probably developed, it would probably. It would probably put. Some. Some inherent restriction on on developing farms. Um into subdivisions, right? Because you'd have to potentially. Do a bunch of planting, uh tree planting, so that may have the impact of.
And we may want to keep those open. We may, you know, if we've got a good. Open field or whatever, we should just maintain the open field. Gives you a variety of habitat. Certainly, I mean, you don't need all forest habitat because there's meadow and uh you know, wet marsh. Or wet meadow areas.
And I mean, I think aesthetically it's probably better. It depends on where you put it, but right, I mean, I'm just thinking of. Some of the developments that have been, I mean, my development has part of it, which is all farmland, right? And there's just nothing. There's just, there's nothing between houses. They're just wide open. I mean, that aesthetically, that isn't ideal.
Maybe we could use the term something like woody vegetation, not specifically trees. Because you have the other issue of wind throw and that. Kind of thing. Because you need a pretty good sized strip. But if they all start out young and they grow together, then they're gonna be a little more so.
Resilient.
Yeah. Because they learn how to give and take. Alright, where would we put that reg, where would we put that regulation then? It says, there are no existing regulations.
See in subdivision um.
Would it be subdivision?
You would just um. Yeah, I mean, I think you put in the subdivision, the shade trees one in twenty-two and. Sort of next section of that. It's sort of an, it's sort of a flip of. Shade trees. Regulation, right?
Would we want to consider that under uh our budget plan uh approval requirements?
True, I mean, yeah, so.
If three fifteen.
No, you're right, you're right, because I mean, at a minimum, you're dealing with. Potentially one eighty-five um. Twenty, right? And then what in this, um so you got that too, if you talk about just residential, so if you want to cover the whole thing, you gotta put it in there at least. But then, yeah, there could be other properties that we might deal with.
There is a section. I think in three fifteen to require those trees to be lined with trees. Uh just keep that in mind too.
Yep.
So that is, that is being done now with other subdivisions.
That's right, although I'm focusing on the minimum, uh there are a number of categories that. Doing well. Okay, uh open space residential development requirements.
If this even is legal anymore, but that's yet to be decided.
We're getting to that uh pilot discussion in a few moments uh. Uh so the idea of uh allowing open space subdivisions by right, that's that's uh one of the recommendations. Um and then, of course, the the optimal is to require an open space development plan be submitted with all conventional subdivision plans. On point for this evening.
Seems to me the optimal would. Take us out of the gray areas. But we await. Town council.
So I. So I suppose though, I think the only thing I want to. Take a walk through is a look at what, uh. Let's go back to the hearing, uh, for when open space subdivision, excuse me, flexible residential. Developments, uh, were the decision put into the bylaws. Look at the motivation for keeping as special permit, um, what. Uh, discretion. Uh, what the planning board at the time wanted, had the power to decide. Of those most. Uh, as usual, in that particular cases, just Marcus to go to buy right option.
Okay.
Okay.
Find out where back can go.
Yeah, that's. To be determined. All right, flipping forward a couple of pages here.
Look at all these great open space.
Current, uh, general regulations table two. Uh, it's how the planning board made a critical vision and a special permit. Takes into consideration point system for preservation of open space, more compact design, narrow roads. And the lines of flag lots. The roots, setbacks and all that earns points on that. That's flexible residence development. And so. This is kind of looking at the flip side of the coin, um, requiring a special permit to go to conventional. Subdivision versus. And the special permit we have left for the flexible. Suppose it's kind of the, uh, much what we were just talking about a moment ago. We will. Learn more in the coming weeks.
Okay. I do want to just not go back one if you can, just for one second. I don't, I just, we don't have to really talk much about it, but.
Which, which would we go back to? I'm sorry.
That one right there, I think it's worth mentioning that you do actually. Kind of make up. Increased recommendation for a couple of those.
One page back please, one page back please. Randy, where were you now?
Even though they're all approved or.
I'm sorry, so we do.
Good, but they recommend on a couple. I'm not sure I shouldn't say recommend, say consider. You know, going up to the optimal. Basically, I think it's. Yeah. Um, so good ranking achieved, but consider the optimal.
I think part of that came from an understanding that there had been some. Friction as well as concern about. Um, how open space um access um has been provided. Some of the flexible developments. In recent history. So I guess that's where the, where the rude logic for specific standards comes.
Was there any specific? The rep, the, I mean, I don't want to call it recommendation because it's not, but gone from forty percent to fifty percent. Is there, is there? A specific thought process about the. Feasibility of that? Or at least how it impacts the. You know, whether people are going to. Use F R D versus not use F R D.
I don't think we talked about. That's specifically, um.
See, the, the challenge, well, the thing is too, it's forty percent of the. Uh, land that excludes any steep slopes and wetlands, so you may end up on some parcels with. Not a lot of buildable area and then you've got a.
But those may be the parcels not to build.
Keep forty percent. Of that. So it's sixty percent of buildable that you get to use. Or developable that you get to build on. I don't know, forty percent seems to have. Worked. Since the bylaws been in effect, I don't know.
No, but it's, it's, um. And also if that's sort of what the encouragement is to try to go to F R D versus conventional, right? Because you have better. You know, more open space, you have less. Land use, um. If that's the preference, then. I wonder if fifty percent. Crosses some threshold where you, you. Discouraging. People from using the flexible. But I don't know. Yeah, I'd have to think about it. Okay. All right, but I, I don't think there's a ton to talk about. I just want to at least point people so they don't miss those three that are there.
Thank you. In the beginning, I said I wanted to talk about, but I guess I decided I didn't. Uh, so for, just to be thorough on that page, the last item, uh, was, uh, where we're looking at our flexible residence development. Setbacks. Right now, uh, there's just a, a set. Just as, as we have our, our standard, um, setback requirements, there's a lesser, uh, figure that applies to. Um, flexible Russian developments. And I guess the, the thought is, is for, is there an opportunity for further flexibility? For both the board as well from the development perspective. Okay. All right, um, so I'm sorry, we, did we finish? Talking about, oh, it goes the flip side, uh, discussion, uh, for conventional development requiring special permit. And right now, we just. Although the recommendations are allowed. Uh, no, I think how development of camp towards open space, uh. Randy made a great point that. In doing so may weaken. The values that are protected, uh. That designated open space. All right. Last three pages. Um, best management practices, standards and regulations. Uh, we'll start off, one of the recommendations has to do with conservation, so we'll, we'll be engaging. Conservation Commission and Conservation Agent on a particular item. Those items, using first two rows. To the first entire page, that's really all.
I'm surprised they don't have steep slopes in there. Now, but.
Um, okay. Green trees and shade trees, um. Right now, uh, as Randy mentioned, we do have requirement, um. Let's see, for, so for under, for shade trees, subdivision regulations. They're required to be species approved by the planning board. Randy's recommending use of native species.
Wish we had a tree expert on the board.
How about the tree warden? Don't we have a tree warden available?
Yeah.
Yeah. I like native species, even though they are, are still susceptible to insects and disease.
White pine, they considered native species?
Yes.
Always say, let's not do them.
Yeah, they would. I don't think they would make a.
When I leave the board, you guys will plant white pine, so.
Their last jobs we probably need would be to create an appropriate list of native.
Yes, recommended native species. We'll even name it after you.
Marcus Phelps tree and native species.
I, I believe that, uh, the new conservation quarter has, has such a list.
Look at that. She's a UMass grad. In environmental science, so.
She's not new. New, new, you know, within a year.
Um, yeah, I think it's, so the, the category that, um. Is noted under that where we're not meeting, uh, with the, the industry optimal. Standards, uh, Randy and I talked about this, uh. And for subdivisions, um, you know, it's a mixed bag because. I appreciate DPW wants to make sure that what we approve is protected, um, so where they're looking at bringing, uh, spacing, uh. Uh, tighter together and closer pavement, that's going to cast more shade onto streets. And from a, from a street longevity standpoint, that.
And the roots tear up the sidewalks.
So kind of a mixed bag with the recommendations, uh, versus what might be the best fit for Southwick. Uh, infiltration practices. So first, uh, items to talk about. Downsout disconnection. Opportunities to, uh, harvest, uh, that rainwater. Um, so notes, we don't have existing regulations about disconnecting existing downspouts.
That was always a conservation commission thing. And they always talked about, uh, downspouts infiltrating the water into the ground. And, uh. Seems to me they would be qualified. A coordinator there.
I, I think so.
Shed some light on.
Good, good discussions, uh.
As far as rain barrels and that sort of thing.
Uh, another interesting suggestion was the temporary. Allow temporary pounding of water in front yards for, uh, in urban circumstances, rooftops.
So right now, there's no. We can do whatever the hell you want.
Well, yes, I guess that's, there's no regulation. All depends on what you mean by that, but there are, there's flexibility for.
I've seen the conservation commission require infiltration of roof water.
And this is true.
Into the ground, into dry wells. But this ponding in the front yards. Rooftops.
That's an interesting suggestion. Um, okay, so green roofs. Not something we've seen a lot of here in Southwick, um, but it may be a little better to, to, to fall over by saying. If, if you as developer would like to propose a green roof for your structure, we're all for it. Exactly. Let it be by right. So hey, that was, that's an easy one. Ship it in the last page. Nice little to end on, right? Uh, all right, last page. Um, native landscaping. So I think the DPW recommendation is to encourage native landscaping, residential yards in common areas. Um, a lot of. Burrage. A lot of landscape architecture, uh, has to do with a mix of.
He use a lot of invasive species.
Over time, many species have been observed. As they are now.
What is that bamboo species that, whoa, it's crazy.
He's, uh, knotweed.
Japanese knotweed.
Uh, there's another one. So some kind of ornamental bamboo that people put in their flower gardens.
Oh, yeah, that's done, yeah.
It's.
Multi-colored, it's red and white, yeah.
You know, purple loose stripe is beautiful too, but.
I will. Um, last, uh, last two items, um, has to do with water harvesting again, um, we don't have any regulations. Regarding the use of water harvesting devices. It seems like again, a low, uh, line to trip over to, to allow that by right. Um, the other suggestion was to allow the, the. Allow the reuse of harvested rainwater for non potable. Um, uses such as irrigation, flushing through a special permit. Uh, to me, it's. Allow us by.
My toilet with the rainwater that I collect from outside.
But what, what's preventing me right now from doing it?
It strikes me as a little cause of, as a plumbing and building coke, uh, concern.
Wow, no, but.
And not a planning.
Yeah, but also, I mean, I, is there anything that makes putting a rain barrel out there?
In some towns, yes. Lots of peoples.
It's probably, there might be a rule in your homeowners association, really?
That's why.
I think it's okay.
I don't know how those people.
Uh, okay, well. I'll put a rain barrel in my house.
Randy, did I miss anything?
No, I think we covered everything.
So those were, those are the, uh, the consultant's, uh, recommendations. Uh, over related with DPW's, um. Assessment of what may work this out.
All right. Yeah, and it doesn't mean we can't. Deal with some of the ones that weren't. Recommended, but you guys, I'd like to get to you guys to look through those and see if there's anything else you want to. Discuss or bring up when we're talking about the bylaws.
Thank you, John and Randy for going through all of that and condensing to a. Digestible format.
I went from thirty-three to twenty-one. And it's a big spot as well, I mean.
Well appreciated and, and, and helpful to go through it like.
I, I sure hope so.
All right.
A lot of work.
Thank you, Randy.
Yeah, thank you all. Uh, so just curious, what's the next step on this?
I think that the next step is. I just think there's a lot to deal with, with these. Bylaws for, um, and not just. Maybe some of these. I think the next, well, let me just put it this way, let me back up and stop rambling. Uh, I think the next step may be to separate out which are subdivision. You know, development specific in which are not. I think the ones that are not can probably get dealt with in reasonably short order, um, through a separate hearing. Um, I think the subdivision one should probably be taken into account with the. You know. Look that we're planning on doing on the subdivision and, and development regulations, uh, or bylaws. That to me seems like a longer process. I just don't think that's getting done before town meeting in the spring. I think that's going to be a.
Part of it, master plan.
Correct, and so I. That'll probably be, you know, if there's going to be a fall one or next spring, that'll probably be dealt with. Plan to be dealt with with that, but I think if we can kind of pull out and maybe. I mean, you know, you don't, we can certainly try to do it as well, but if you and John have any time and can kind of isolate out the non. Subdivision residential. Development ones, and we can kind of put those on for a hearing in the next month or so. We may be able to deal with those at the next town meeting.
That sounds very fair to me. Thank you.
Yep.
Excellent.
Yeah, John and I can take a stab at that list and get you a, a more condensed, condensed list for your next meeting to take a look at.
Yeah, yeah, stuff outside of three fifteen and stuff that, you know, we can deal with. Isolation from that. Okay, perfect. All right, so John, did you want to head back to that potential bylaw and subdivision regulation modifications? Or is there anything else to talk about with that?
Yes, um. That's all, I can say Randy, regardless, he wants to go into this nonsense. Uh, okay, so. We have a few ideas, uh, floating around. Yeah, and as we come down to, you know, crunch time, how much you want to put on our plate, uh, if any, um, for. Bylaw. Uh, revisions and, uh, separate but related conversation is. Three fifteen, um. Although I think we already committed. I checked my notes. To opening a hearing.
On three fifteen?
On three, it was a three fifteen?
Yeah, I don't think that's, I mean, I don't know when we open it, but it's not happening. It's not getting done before the. Before the.
I'm sorry, that was a short term. I was getting.
Yeah, yeah.
There was lots of footnote, I got nervous there. Okay, so a short term, I was one of the, uh, I don't know, one we talked about, uh, obviously the. Uh, stormwater stuff we just went through, uh, and I do think it makes sense to, uh, like, you're right, uh, the. Stuff that applies to called keeping residential, those opportunities, some of the low hanging pieces of fruit, separate that from, uh, some of the larger. Uh, issue as well as three fifteen, we got, it's easy enough to deal, uh, with. And we can, and Randy and I can work on that. Um, we did run across the conundrum with common driveway, uh, width and separation to, um. I think it was mostly really real separation to adjacent properties. Uh, where the math for separation on either side plus the, where, where the. Instead of required, right? Where the math didn't work out properly. Um, if this is the right opportunity. Uh, we can. I think that is not a huge. One to put in there, but I recognize it takes a little bit of thought. Okay, what happens to separation? How do we order? Where it's still the right fit, uh, in the board's eyes.
Yeah. Um, and Doug just pointed out to me. That there is, I, I want to speak correctly because. Three fifteen doesn't have to go to town meeting. Uh, because it's a regulation. When I'm thinking about it in my head. I think three fifteen and one eighty-five, twenty all have to be sort of taken into account at one time because they really. I, I don't know, to me. I I don't know, to me, there's a big, that's a big exception to three fifteen, and so I think if we look at that globally. It's a better, we get a better product. So. I guess I I want to be specific that I think. So that's gonna have to go to town meeting if we change anything on one eighty, is it one eighty-five, twenty, that right?
Oh, for site plan.
Not. Well, we.
Forty-five.
Twenty-five, twenty-three.
Yep.
Twenty-three, and then also the um garden apartment one or whatever that one is.
Twenty A.
Whatever that is. They have apartments and um whatever they just did. Depot on, because I'm on depot. Um, so. I think all that has to be sort of looked at. Collectively.
Okay.
So. But then, once you look at it collectively. I gotta figure out how to best do that in a hearing, because one of it's gonna be on three fifteen, one of it, one is gonna be on a regulation, one's gonna be on bylaws. But um. But at least that's the way I think of it. So that's why I'm sort of, I'm I'm, I have town meeting in my head, but three fifteen does not have to be dealt with. At a town meeting, so. Um, so just keep that in mind, too. I gotta, I gotta make sure I keep that in mind, too. Okay, sorry.
That's okay. Uh, appreciate the clarification on uh on the Florida approach.
Thank Mr. Mobley.
Don't mind his um. Uh, so. Earlier, I think what you made reference to Mike was uh when we were talking about the covenants. Um, and reexamining, I think what you're referring to was the covenant who have bond. Um, approach uh and uh that component of uh regulations, subdivision regulations. Uh, just just raising that again, that's a for a living time, that's fine. Um, we also are assuming that as as on the ground right now, looking at the two plan requirement, if that need, if that means that there is an opportunity to either uh eliminate a conflict um or to put a requirement or to bolster our subdivision regulations so that that was the best opportunity from uh from the town's perspective. From the planning board's perspective is being brought um for. That's kind of a big idea right now, because what is the best opportunity, I guess, is something that uh we're all considering and figuring out what that is. Those were the items that I first jumped out to me. Um, so perhaps the only item that I mentioned right there that uh is related to one eighty-five. Um, I come to the NIPD's uh uh lower hanging pieces that we mentioned um and looking at the common driveway. Um, I suppose I offshoot of that common driveway, which I could have sworn, I don't know if I mentioned it, uh and then right now, we I think the consultants review uh by allowing two driveways. I think we're hitting the cloud, you know, good uh.
Two, two houses.
Two houses for.
Per common drive.
I know this is all relatively recent bylaws, but if there was any uh discussion or debate about uh changing that, that's a on the table as well.
All right. All right, so short term rental. We got the NIPD stuff that doesn't relate to development. And then the common driveway.
And we're not gonna deal with the flexible residential development. Situation.
No, I mean, I think, again, I I think that all needs to be dealt with sort of as one, and then you know. You you have a comprehensive scheme versus these little things that are.
Because we wanted to make sure it's cross-reference between one eighty-five and three fifteen minutes.
We also need to figure out.
Mentioned in both places, so.
Yeah.
Someone doesn't. Yeah.
We need to figure out what the law is on that, too. I mean, here's my thought on that sort of bigger three fifteen. Flexible residential apartment. Discussion is, I think it's worthwhile for all the board members to create a list of issues or potential changes that they're thinking about, or the issues that have come up over the last handful of years that they think might be worth talking about. I think it's worth reaching out to sending a memo to all the boards, asking them for any input on suggested changes or issues that they see that should be discussed by the board. I think worth reaching out to sort of the interested parties and stakeholders, you know, developers, um Vivek's office, or, you know, stop me, stop me if you want, but I mean, um, you know, folks who are commonly in front of us to see what they see as potential issues, and we can at least discuss them. Um, you know, um, any of the developers on the recent developments may have thoughts on it. Um. Hell, even the, you know, homeowner associations on some of the recent developments may have thoughts on. You know, um, some of it. Uh, you know, I think you that I'm focused on the actual bylaw and not just complaints about how things are going, but uh, you know, I think getting getting input of the various stakeholders is a useful thing to get done, and then we can kind of take that and conduct, I think, a pretty uh intelligent public hearing on potential changes to these and create a better comprehensive.
Yeah, if you held off on that, we're gonna have some master plan input. Either through the focus group on housing. And some of the other uh uh groups we have, because we do have some of those types of people involved in those discussions, not so much the homeowner association, which is an interesting thought, too, but uh you know, we do have some designers, uh developers, yeah.
So why don't we'll get, I mean, if John, you can get like a quick little memo or something together that we could send to various stakeholders, um. You know, the boards and whoever else, we could get that to you guys. You can get that to the people involved. I mean, we're not, this is not getting dealt with, and a public hearing is not being opened for a handful of months. We're dealing with these other things right now. This is gonna get. Let's do the legwork to get the issues identified and and you know, then open the hearing in a few months. I think it's the way to go. Um, and it does, I think that dovetails nicely with the master plan committee, and you can get stuff from the consultants or the, you know, the the experts, um, the master plan will be nearing completion anyways when you started to open up this. So I mean, I think that all kind of dovetails nicely.
Yeah.
Together, okay.
Okay.
All right, so that would be my, you know, just asking for. We can figure out the wording and give me a, yeah, we can do it, but you know, suggested changes or issues that they've seen in the process or things that they want to bring to the board's attention.
Okay, so. No problem. I'll put a draft together.
Um, anything else with that?
No, um. I think I offshoot of that uh comes back around to scrutiny acceptance procedure, um and like I said, I'll be uh sharing some research on that point, but I think in many communities, that's uh ended being a a select board um policy or regulation.
I'm okay letting select word deal with that. Hey, we can certainly. You can certainly share all the legwork that you've done.
Well, just happy to put so.
And.
Some lines.
You know. Well, maybe a select word issue. I think that the the, you know, a summary or a checklist being derived from it and being available to you is gonna be necessary, right? Because you're gonna be the point person for that information, so.
Think that'll help.
In all likelihood. Considering that's, you're you're gonna be the point person for the development, so you you're probably gonna be the point person for that process, too. Um, okay. All right, what is next?
We have a.
Eight Concord Road. Okay. Um, you're gonna need to allow me to share my screen.
Oh, sure. Okay.
That's a little too big. Okay. Everybody can see that? Okay. All right, so this is the estate lot special permit and site plan approval for eight Concord Road. Let's go through any issues with the procedural history. Ready good?
Yes.
Findings, anybody have anything with the general findings? You do. All right. But I mean, heard nothing on the rest of this. I'm gonna go down to the special permit criteria. We'll look at one through six.
It says number two, it says currently contains a single family residence? I thought it was vacant.
No, they're create, if you remember, they're creating the estate lot for the parcel that's has the homes, right? And cutting off or.
They're A and R.
They're gonna A and R. Yeah.
But he already drives out.
They need to estate lot.
Right, I I know the estate lot is gonna be the vacant parcel.
No. They're gonna estate lot the current site so they can A and R a portion off of it and allow the non A and R portion to be compliant with uh the bylaw. If that makes sense.
Well, where's the statement before that it said it was vacant land or something?
So the subject property is.
Oh, geez.
Why? What?
Yeah, the second line, A one.
It's a single family property home already existing on the parcel.
Well, hold on. The subject parcel is the entire.
Right.
Correct.
Yep, entirety of it.
Yeah, there's something not right there. There's good music.
Uh, give me a minute. Was that last meeting?
Yes.
You may have to go grab it.
I'm sorry, what do you?
What do we need to write on? Um, so.
For what? The description of the property?
The subject property. So this is just going by my memory, right? We gotta.
Wouldn't you have the plan in the other, yeah, the plan in the other room? I thought today I saw. There's a big house on part of it, and then the part they want to carve out is wooded. And used for agricultural purposes.
So out of the larger parcel, they want to create an estate lot on a portion of it.
Yep.
Which they will then and they will A and R the remainder.
All right, nice. A and R, small, maybe transferred, not related to this application.
Right.
So that ends up being.
But that hasn't been done yet.
That's cool.
Because they can't do.
Until they establish that the state law is is eligible.
Okay, the the parcel is currently the parcel currently contains.
Single family.
Single family. I cannot.
Um.
The accessory structures.
Does it contain accessory structures?
At least the shed.
Is that then would have really nice. So nice.
Portions either wooded or used for, is that right? Wait.
Yeah, would the.
A single family home accessory structures with the remaining portions. Oh. With portions of the. Never mind, it doesn't matter. We don't need any of that. Right? Okay.
What else?
Nice catch.
Yeah. Okay. So.
So item two then now says it's it's all right.
All right. How about three through nine?
Are we saying five? I mean, the proposed use is just to leave it vacant, right?
No, the estate lot is the one that's going to have the house on it.
Oh, okay. All right. See, estate lot contains the house. Got it.
Right. Actually, probably not proposed use, right? It's probably current use. Or existing use. Have been provided. Already there, right?
Yeah, you could use existing.
You know, suggest that if anything needs to be done.
So instead of proposed use, you're saying existing use? Changing that?
How about that?
I mean, for number six.
Write on a copy that existing continuing.
Yeah. Okay. Oh.
Through the careful placement of the proposed residence.
Hmm.
It already exists, right? Oh, here in ten.
Site. Thank you.
Marcus, which one were you talking?
No, you you fixed it, you just did it. Just fixed it.
Hey. Anything else? Okay.
Did we impose conditions? Our standard ones, oh, what happened there?
What, we're not, it's been.
I just saw go up. We're just talking about condition. Oh.
That's just the standard language that we have at the end of one through seventeen there.
Yep.
Uh, anything on specific findings? Anything on one through nine? Okay, decision. And I don't capitalize.
I want to change one A, right?
Yeah. You wanna say the existing structures?
Uh, two through eight. Who's gonna raise four? Most semitic fellow with that.
I think so.
Any other problems? Okay. I heard a vote.
Common driveway?
No, geez, you know, it's funny, I burned this one out, I was like, man, this is happening here. Word processing is a wonderful thing.
It's a wonderful thing, what did we do? Before we had word word processing.
It's great to have a fruitful editors.
Yes, it's amazing.
It's fruitful, let's put it that way, huh?
Well, your motion to grant the estate lot special permit and site plan approval for eight Concord Road.
Marcus Phelps will move.
So, in in subject to the terms and conditions stated in this written decision.
Charles singer second.
Mr. Utzinger second.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Charles singer, I.
Dave's been I.
Okay. Um. And do I hear a, uh. Motion to approve this written decision for eight. Concord Road.
As written.
As written.
Marcus Phelps will move.
Seems we've done.
Charles singer second.
Uh. Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, I.
Marcus Phelps, I.
Am I wrong?
Charles singer, I.
Hey, I.
Alright, decision is written. Okay. I want that, I want that exactly in the minutes, just like.
It has, it was in the last minute, yeah.
Fantastic.
That's why I saw.
I want to see that.
It's gotta be, uh. Proper, right?
All right, hey, everybody, that's that one should have been cleaner, I'm sorry about that.
Um. Master plan advisory committee update.
Uh, yes.
Uh, keeping in mind that it's nine thirty nine, Marcus.
Is it, are we going before ten?
Yeah.
Uh, we're meeting this Thursday, the nineteenth. For another exciting go around. The senior listening session was postponed because the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Uh, person was not available to facilitate that, so that'll have to be rescheduled.
I'll add that, uh, although I haven't heard any, uh, feedback, they still had a robust, uh, but two hour session in here. Uh, with just the, uh. Uh, director of senior services.
Oh, she conducted it, yeah. Was that?
There was, there was plenty of smart people in there.
Was that recorded, do you know, or?
I don't know.
Yeah, okay. And there was a farmer forum held. By the agricultural. Commission, so. We've got that on our agenda for a report from them, uh, this coming Thursday, so. That's all.
Okay, minutes.
I recommend we defer those, right, because changes have not been made.
Fantastic.
Changes have been made.
Do you have some recommendations as well?
Said that you listed, uh, the Nifty's item. Towards the end of the routine business with nothing kind of. There, like, I think you might want to just mention that you and Randy will be finalizing your recommendations or something.
That's good advice. Uh, thank you.
By the way, it's just. Looking at me.
I would probably have prompted you to do something with it, but I missed, so.
All right, and I would point out that. Doug has indicated that transportation focus group was recorded, so.
The transportation.
Uh, the our, the infrastructure.
Oh, yeah, good.
All right. Who wants to be?
The lack of Mr. Sutton's presence as duly appointed Dave, I'll make a motion to the chair.
Were you in fact duly appointed? Uh, all those who favor say aye.
Uh, Marcus Phelps will second it, and I.
Yeah, I would be a second, all right. Good night, everyone.
Good night, Mrs. Galabash.